According to national statistics, one in every three American homes is affected by substance use disorder and only one of every 10 persons who needs treatment receives treatment. You might not know it, but someone you know or care about could be suffering in silence. Offering your hand of support can be crucial to getting that person connected to care and recovery. To learn more or to get help, come see me. I'm Mayor Neil O'Leary. I'm here to help, and so is the City of Waterbury.
process to... Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the special meeting of the Board of Alderman from Monday, May 10, 2021 at 5:30. Purpose of the meeting is to discuss with various department heads the budget issues for the mayor's proposed upcoming budget. Before we begin, let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cabala.
Present.
Alderwoman Caro. Alderwoman Caro. Alderman DG Odenkaro.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Oh, are you muted, Mike? Yeah. Now you're unmuted. Good.
Alderman Hunter. Alderman Hunter. Alderman Fez.
I'm here.
Alderman Markey.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujam.
Present.
Alderman Salio.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Zimmerman. Alder Zimmerman.
She's logging on in two seconds.
All right, put her present.
Yes.
Right here.
Alderman Bernerewski.
Here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Oh, Weaver's in on now? Okay.
Yeah, Weaver's on now.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Okay.
Kelly Zimmerman is also here, Mr. President. Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay. We have you. We saw you pop on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we have a quorum. And so the, as I said, the purpose of this evening's first meeting is to go through the budget with certain department heads that you'd all requested to speak with. So we'll go, we'll begin at this point with the mayor's office. So I don't know if you guys have any questions you want to start with that we can just go to them? You Alderman, I mean.
I'm there, isn't here?
No.
Okay, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor's Office. I'm going to ask some questions that no one wants to ask, so I apologize in advance. As a disclaimer, we know that everyone works very hard in that office, and this is not a personal thing. We're looking at the numbers here, and some of the positions where we didn't add a position, the salaries have increased between 19 and like 20%. And there were also positions that were given raises last year. I'm just wondering, and this might not be a mayor's office answer, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. Is there a way where we can create a bonus structure to award employees for goals that they've accomplished instead of raising salaries? Because I understand what's, what we're trying to do here, right? We're trying to, you know, people have a worth that they bring to the city, and that's how we come up with salaries. But when I look at some roles, and when other people look at some of the roles, and we're at 20% increases and contracted positions like police officers and things like that are 3% to 5%, or actually, that was going to be one of my questions for another group, they're much lower. How do we, is there a way that we can kind of explain that? Or is there a way that we can start putting packages together to compensate employees for the goals that they're reaching?
Are we talking, hi, Alderman Zimmerman, Alderwoman Zimmerman. Are we talking, we're talking about employees in the mayor's office, correct?
Yes, sir.
So why don't you give me an example of what salaries you're troubled with, and I can try to explain to you what my line of thinking is? I'm the person that's responsible for administering raises.
Sure. And again, I'm speaking for a few people. It's not just myself, right? So I don't want to make this a personal question that I'm asking. But we're looking at the executive secretary line, and we're looking at the chief of staff line.
Okay. So the chief of staff is budgeted at 105, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you were to look at the chief of staff positions in Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, and other comparable cities of Waterbury, that is extraordinarily low.
Okay.
And I brought Mac in in 2018. At what salary?
55.
I brought him in at 2018 at $55,000 a year. I generally start people a little bit lower, and once they prove themselves, I tell them if they do the job that is expected of them and go above and beyond, that I will, you know, reward them with raises. So in addition to the salary, Mac does have a vehicle. But here's the story. So he works literally seven days a week. He is on call 24 hours a day, 365. He gets the phone calls first. So the police chief, the fire chief, the superintendent of schools, the superintendent of public works, all the other positions, they don't call me, they call him first. And then he triages the situation at 3:00 in the morning or on Christmas Day or Easter, and then he reports back. And not only does he do that, but he works closely with whatever department is calling, with whatever issue they have to resolve the issue. So to be honest with you, if I could pay him a lot more, I would, particularly through this pandemic. I have never seen anyone work harder than this guy and Adam Ranko, quite frankly, especially over the last 15 months. So honestly, I think the raise was all we could afford, but I don't look at it as bonuses. I look at it, either you do your job or you don't. And in the mayor's office, you do your job 24/7. And so I pay my people accordingly, and that's how I do it, so.
And that's understood, sir. And Matt, again, you've picked up every phone call I've ever called in. This isn't a hit on any person. I'm just trying to gather information so I can explain it and understand it.
Well, listen, Kelly, I want to make sure that we're clear on something. I've been around too long to take any of this stuff personal. These are qualified and fair questions. They really are. I'm going to be honest with you. You know, I feel very strongly that in order for me to retain the talent that I have in this administration, I need to pay them. I don't want to lose these people. And truth of the matter is, I'm losing someone, I just found out today, who is moving on for a bunch of different reasons, one of which is the compensation. But, you know, it is what it is, and that's the climate that, you know, we have to deal with. You know, it's really, you know, I mean, folks may not believe this, but it's really hard to find good, qualified, committed, competent help in positions like this. We are expected to work, you know, literally 24 hours a day. Executive secretary's salary, honestly, again, I've increased Tia's workload tremendously, and she is doing amazing job for me. But again, you know, I don't want to lose these people. And, you know, when you look at the overall budget, you know, I could understand the concern if the overall budget didn't average 1.15% increase year over year under this administration. And these are fair questions, and they're good questions, and I appreciate them. But, you know, this is, this is how I operate, and I definitely feel that fair compensation is what has kept this city going in the direction that it's going in.
Is there any way that we can create bonus structures to award employees on certain goals? For instance, if, you know, I still think about the day I voted down no to Michael Blank's salary because I hated that, because Mike does a tremendous amount of work for our city. But I suggested if there was a program where if there were so much savings, we'd be able to compensate the employee, like for your office, if there's, if there are so many goals that are met, we can compensate them monetarily on, you know?
Well, I'm certainly not afraid to look at it, and I know that they do that in the private sector, certainly in sales jobs and things like that, and that's understandable. The thing that's different here, and, you know, I mean, anybody that would like to shadow any of these people on any particular day of the week are welcome to. Every day is a different, every day is different, right? Rarely is yesterday the same as today, and tomorrow will be the same as today. These guys have to be mobile, fluid, they have to be, act on their feet, they'd have to know who to call, when to call, how to call, and how to handle a situation. I don't really, I'm not saying that I would not look at that kind of system, I'm just not that familiar with that. I've never had that in the police department because it's against the contract, and I've never had, operated, I mean, I give, I give these guys goals, and, you know, most of what their goals each year include, you know, constituent service, project management, department head evaluations, you know, most of these goals, honestly, they far exceed. I don't know how to do the structure, but I'd be more than happy to have follow-up conversations with anyone on those ideas.
Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Markey. As going off of what Alderman Zimmerman said, Mac is a great person and does a lot for the city, and especially during this COVID time. But I think if we're talking about benefits and bonuses, this would be a year when you would think of a bonus because he's gone way beyond what he should have on a normal basis because of an abnormal timeframe. So if there was some way to do something, instead of always giving a raise every year, in a year like this here where they should get a lot more for what they did, maybe there is a way to do a bonus for overextended, with way beyond what they really should have done.
You know, and that's a good point, Kevin, and that's much appreciated. The fact is, I've been here for nine and a half years, and every single year, every single one of these people in this office, quite frankly, goes above and beyond, beyond, beyond. And so I don't know how to do that, except that I would think that it would have more of a negative impact on the overall budget if I did something like that, because every year they do so much more than is expected of them, regardless of COVID, particularly in the chief of staff position. But they're all a vital part of the team. You know, the one thing I want to point out to all of you is that I've been here for nine and a half years, and the mayor's office budget, overall budget, over nine and a half years has gone up about $90,000, $90,000 since I started December 1st, 2011. So, you know, I'm pretty conservative when it comes to compensation, but I'm also pretty generous to people who consistently show their commitment to the city and go above and beyond. And then when I go to Connecticut Conference of Municipality meetings, and I talk to the mayors of Hartford, New Haven, and Bridgeport, and I, and Stanford, and I talk to mayors of smaller cities, I can tell you that our salary structure for our people in the mayor's office is extraordinarily low compared to those cities. I don't know that those cities, I don't like sometimes comparing salaries to salaries, but the reality is, if a guy like Mac was leaving, he would be, he would be, listen, someone would be very happy to have him, and they're very happy to pay him quite a bit more than he's paying now. So I try to keep it so that they are happy, but I also try to keep it, I don't, you know, if you look at my salary, it's much different than it is for the mayor of Hartford, New Haven, and Bridgeport as well. And, you know, I, look, I know what that's a job I signed up for, and I know what it's all about, and believe me, I don't, I'm not complaining, but what I'm saying is, is that given the track record of my budgeting overall, year over year, 1.15% average increase, and given the fact that the mayor's budget in nine and a half years has gone up $90,000 over nine and a half years, I hear you. I'll look at whatever you want me to look at, and I'll learn from your guidance, if that's what you'd like me to do at the end of the day. I don't know if I would sign on to it, but I'm not afraid to sit down and have a cup of coffee and, and learn about what you guys are thinking might be a more efficient way to budget.
Appreciate that, sir, and thanks, Mac, for being my example. Sorry.
My pleasure.
One more question, just, not just, but the grants coordinator and the senior mayoral advisor, did the senior mayoral advisor go away, maybe the grants coordinator go to another department?
Which one is that?
The senior mayoral advisor, that was George's position.
Okay.
And then grants coordinator, we didn't fund this year. If I can get this.
Right. So the senior advisor to the mayor was George DiAgostino, and he left, he retired after, I think, about 49 years with the city. And so we have not, I'm sorry, Kelly, I don't know where they, where I am here.
What's wrong?
We did not budget that position, as you can see, because George is gone. But I want to caution you, you know, we are running about 120 miles an hour on an 80 mile an hour car here every day. But, you know, and the other position that we didn't, we did not fund is the grants coordinator. If I, if I was lucky enough to find a grants coordinator that I feel would be a good, work well within the city, and that's something that I'm desperately looking at now, and I will just tell you in all full disclosure that, you know, with all the money that's coming the city's way, both on the education side and the general government side with the American Rescue Plan, you know, I am going to have to have some, working with our finance director and our budget director, we're going to have to figure out a mechanism and an infrastructure to put a lot of accountability in place for all those dollars. I'm working with the superintendent of schools right now to talk about that further, and also working with Michael Blank and Sarah to talk about it further on the general government side.
Thank you for your time, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thank every one of you for what you're doing.
So are there any other questions for the, with respect to the mayor's office? All right. Thank you then, Mr. Mayor. Hearing none, then the next department would be the Health Department.
Okay, then just give us a couple seconds.
Okay.
Hey, President, can we have Cindy Vinton from the Health Department here?
All right. So does anyone have questions for the Health Department? Going once? All right. Alderman Lofos.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President. Mr. President, correct me if I'm wrong, but these departments were actually invited in today because someone, an alderman or an alderwoman, requested that they attend the meeting to ask questions. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is the alderman or alderwoman who requested these departments to attend, are they, are they absent at today's meeting?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
That's fine.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'll ask a question.
I'm a new shame.
So they're already there. I'm sorry, who's there to speak on behalf of the Health Department?
Ms. Vinton.
Ms. Vinton, how are you? Thank you for coming in today. Obviously, you know, the whole world shut down in the last year and a month or two. Was, this pandemic, of course, threw everyone's lives and, you know, down a whirlwind. You know, parents like myself had to learn how to be the teacher and, you know, manage the household and what have you. How was your department? How did it handle? From what I see on social media and you partnering with other organizations, I feel like you guys did a great job with the whole pandemic and getting glitter to out to the communities with the vaccines and what's going on. What changes have you guys made, if any, for any future, future pandemics like this or something that just goes viral even within our city? Has there been something in place for future crisis, quote unquote? And as well, was this something that, you know, how much do you think was budgeted or spent due to this pandemic?
Okay. Let me address the first question. Under the leadership of Adam Ranko, emergency manager, I think we've done as a cross-section of the city, an exemplary response to this pandemic. I don't know that we can say that we can anticipate the next one, but there will be a next one. We know that because of history. I think that we have mechanisms already in place, for example, going back to the Ebola response a couple years back, and even the more, almost easier to handle responses to overdose, opioid overdoses in the city. So I don't think we can conjecture how we would respond, but that preparedness does have principles about how to respond that I think are deeply ingrained in the emergency management department and in preparedness in general in public health. And then with regard to budgeting, because of the seven-day week response that's been going on since the beginning of last year, I think Sarah would probably be in a better position to say how much has been spent through, you know, FEMA and other sources of funding.
Sure. Thank you, Cindy. Alderman Nujam, I would just note that for the Health Department, their general fund budget didn't really have anything budgeted for COVID because of the timing of the pandemic in the current year, fiscal year '21. We were pretty much completing the budget development time when the pandemic hit, so it really wasn't contemplated in the fiscal year '21 budget, our current year. And then going into fiscal year '22, we didn't budget for COVID-related expenses within the general fund. We have been the beneficiary of quite a bit of federal funding, and we really use that to our advantage from things such as purchasing PPE, testing, the administration of the vaccine. So all of the federal funding that we've received has allowed us to pretty much keep the expenses out of the general fund. And we are just today learning of some of the guidelines related to the American Rescue Plan, which we'll be receiving quite a bit of funding from that as well. So we'll be working on coming up with a budget for that funding as we move forward.
Okay. So do what the help of the FEMA, the government, and some rescue plans, it did not impact from the city point of view of what the taxpayers paid towards that budget?
That's correct.
That we were in good shape? Okay. Thank you.
Alderman DG Ben-Carlo, did you have something you wanted to say? I see a little hand up next to your picture there, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say while she was here that worked with the Health Department since day one, Emergency Operations Center, between the pandemic and the heroin epidemic, they've done an incredible job. Not sure everybody recognized it is in the city, but they've done an incredible job since day one, worked day and night, manned EOC 24/7, seven days a week. So since they're here, I want to give them a little shout out to the Health Department. I think they've done an incredible job, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? All right. Hearing none, then we'll move on to the next department, which is the Water Department. Cindy, thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work.
President, Rescue, we have Rob Lang and Helen Davis-Ham from the Water Department.
Thank you. Okay, so we're up with water. Does anyone have any questions for the Water Department?
Mr. President, I could start on this one, please.
Alderman Nujam.
Thank you for recognizing me. Just a couple of questions. Obviously, we've been at this for a couple of years with the water. If we could start first, what are the pating with the contracts with Watertown and other surrounding cities or towns that we sell our water to? Were we an illegality's point as well as with the case with Watertown, and, you know, should we expect that money in this upcoming year or two?
When we get to that, President? Yeah, that's fine. Sure. Hi, Mayor.
So I'm sorry, I think I caught the end of the question. I was in the hallway, but you're looking to know where we are with Watertown litigation.
Yeah. You know, we started this a couple of years ago, and their refusal to pay, you know, to me is unjustified when, you know, if someone in the city doesn't pay their water and after so long, you know, they get shot off. Obviously, we've had this discussions, we can't just shut them off. Where are we with their contract and basically in the court proceedings? And my follow-up question is, if our rates are going up, which obviously our infrastructure is 100 years old, a lot of the other surrounding cities and towns have been paying 110%. Are we looking to possibly increase that percentage to maybe 115 or anything like that? Or do we have to by statute keep it at 110%?
Well, that's a question for our lawyers, Linda Whibley, and we can get you that answer, Alderman Nujam, and we will get you the answer. We are currently in contracts with them. But one of the things that the city was very wise to do over the last several years, instead of getting into 20-year contract arrangements or contract arrangements with no expiration date, which is what we have in one town quite frankly, you know, we are maxing out at five-year contracts, so. But that question will answer. And let me just go back to, and I'll start with Watertown. So in all fairness, I'm not happy about it, but in all fairness to Watertown, the COVID-19 shut down the courthouses, and we are in litigation with that. Make no mistake about it. We filed for a motion of summary judgment against the town recently. You know, the judge wanted us to go into mediation. We, at that point, didn't feel it was advantageous. We, at that point, didn't feel it was advantageous for us to go into mediation, so we told him just to go ahead and rule, and after he rules, we'll take it from there. So the judge ruled against the city for a motion of summary judgment. And so now we are pursuing other legal remedies through the courts to address the Watertown issue. Look, it's either going to go through mediation or it's going to go through a full-blown trial. We're not sure yet. A lot of it is going to depend on what the lawyers and the experts in the field believe that we should be doing. Watertown's case is a little bit different than some of our other smaller towns who are all paying 110% of what a Waterbury resident pays only because they have a very advanced and a very intricate infrastructure and and they feel that that's the reason why they shouldn't be paying what the smaller communities pay. And you know what? Maybe that's a valid argument, but at the end of the day, we're pursuing all of our legal remedies. The courthouses are now finally reopening, thankfully. And so we will, you know, we are, we haven't fallen asleep at the switch at all, as a matter of fact. All the paperwork around the city side has been submitted and had been submitted and then COVID shut everything down. So now that we're in the reopening stage, I think probably this summer might yield some, at least some successful direction on where we are with that suit. And at the end of the day, I'd be more than happy to keep you all posted on a very regular basis when there's something to report and something new.
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, we have since eliminated the 20-year contracts and have done a more valid, up-to-date, five-year contract for these surrounding cities and towns? Correct, okay.
Yeah, we have Alderman Newjame and and we're still, we're still, we're in the town of Wolket, we're going to go, should we, they pay 110% of their water consumption. We are still in negotiations with them on the sewer rates and those negotiations are ongoing. Even though the courts are closed, we've been meeting with the Wolket on a regular basis to try to figure out a way that can, you know, get us to where we need to be. I'm not saying that we, I'm not really comfortable that we've made any milestone efforts or hurricane efforts in the area, but Wolket has a position. They actually have a contract that has no expiration date on it when the city of Waterbury entered into it. Oh God, 40 years ago or something like that. So that's probably something that could. I'm not saying it will, but it could end up in front of a Superior Court Judge as well. Although Wolket does, whatever we bill Wolket, they pay. So I don't want to make it sound like they're not.
I'm being good citizens.
They are paying. They've been very, they've been very conscientious and they've been at the table and they're trying to work it out. But, you know, the lawyers are saying one thing and and that's understandable and our lawyers are thinking another. And, you know, they've had this contract with the sewer for over 40 years and a lot of things have changed in 40 years. So we're trying to work through that. We have a very strong working relationship with the town. And I feel, I feel like, you know, if we can't get to where we need to be, then we'll agree that it's got to go in front of a judge, a lot of judge decide, okay?
Is the, is the 10% for the surrounding cities and towns statutory? Or is this contracted? Or is it, like, could we ever raise that if we need to, to help pay off some of our infrastructure or is it set in stone?
Well, it's what's negotiated in each of the contracts, so I'm sure that, you know, the lawyers would have the ability to renegotiate that if need be. And so, you know, listen, you know, the consumption rate in Wolket and Nogatuck and Thomaston in Middlebury, it really is very low, Alderman Newjame, on the water distribution consumption. The town that has the highest consumption of Waterbury water, of course, is Watertown.
Of course, the ones that aren't paying. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Further questions for the Water Department? Hearing none, then thank you, gentlemen, for coming in this evening. We'll go on to the Public Works Department.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, did you have a question?
Oh, I do, I'm sorry.
Oh. If, on water, on the Water Department? Kelly?
Yes, I think they're muted. I thought you were calling the Water Department. Yes, I have a question, if they're still available.
Let me see if we can keep them for a second. Can you guys hear me in the Zoom room?
I can email them.
I think they've, they're muted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is it better that we call out or that we raise the little hand guy in Zoom, which is easier for you, Mr. President?
Call out.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting old, Kelly. I don't see as well as I used to and these screens are getting smaller and smaller, so.
President and President of Rescue, we have Kevin Dahl from Jacobs here and Michael Blank as well. Sewer was on the list, so I don't know if there were any questions.
I'm sorry, did I skip sewer?
Yeah, I think you said Public Works.
Public Works, we'll do sewer, okay. Go ahead. Anybody have questions for the Sewer Department?
I think I have a quick question, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Hello, guys.
Good evening. You're unmuted.
You're muted, Kelly.
Sorry about that. How are you? Quick question for the fire hookups in other towns. I guess that hooks up to the sewer, like the fire hydrants and things. I'm not too knowledgeable on this, but I'm wondering, is that something that comes in as revenue as well from other towns?
Do we have this fire?
It's more on the water side, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would hook up to the water lines, not to the sewer lines.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
Mr. President.
Alderman Markey.
I noticed that this year, gentlemen, that there is a new line item for $150,000 on water pollution going out to taxes to other towns that wasn't there in prior years. Can you explain how, where that came from?
Other objects, taxes to other towns? Yeah. There's a description on the description page for that. Yes, so what that item represents is actually come back to the city of Waterbury. There is a, there are three fuel cells that are operating over in the water pollution control plant. And there's, there's questions at the moment as it relates to the exemption status as it relates to those fuel cells from the personal property tax that the city of Waterbury would levy. So in the event that the exemption status does not hold, we want it to be in a position where there would be a funding mechanism in order to make that property tax payment to the city of Waterbury. It would just be because the sewer fund operations is a separate enterprise fund. It's a cost that would be borne on the sewer side of the house, if you will. But again, ultimately, that revenue would come back to the city through its general property tax revenue.
Thank you. So that's different than the water enterprise tax to other towns, which is doubled for $900,000. This is something separate then, correct?
That's correct. And on the water side, those taxes are truly taxes paid to other towns where the water treatment plant, as well as the reservoirs, are located in other taxing districts further north.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for sewer?
I got one, Mr. President.
Mr. Alderman DG of Onkarla?
Just a follow-up to what's been going on. How are we doing with the odor control or where are we at with the odor control system and and what we've been doing? Just maybe an update on that.
Want to take that one? Sure. So we have made temporary improvements to the odor control system, which I think the complaints this year have been down significantly. And there were some further capital upgrades that were scheduled to be made and those bids, RFP went out a while back, maybe a month or two. And those bids are in right now and being evaluated for selection.
Okay, thank you. And that be a, for a more permanent solution?
Yes, it's replacing some of the equipment that's beyond its useful life and then adding a polishing unit on the main odor source. I guess that would be called like solids building where the solids are being handled. We're going to add a second odor control unit, so it's in series. So you have two stages of treatment.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, then thank you, gentlemen, for being here and we'll move on to Public Works.
Hey, President and President of Rescue, we have Dave Simpson, Director of Public Works, and Roy Kavanaugh, our new City Engineer. We're here to answer questions and we also have some other members of the Public Works staff as well.
Okay, great. So questions for the Public Works folks? Nope?
Hey, Mr. President. I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Simpson, for being here today. I know we've had a major overhaul with the Public Works Department. Thanks to your leadership, obviously moving into the new building a couple of years ago. Any updates that you can give us on how that helped improve the facilities over there? And also, I had a couple of residents concerned about the usage of our recycle and garbage trucks. What is the, what is the age of them and are they due, are some of the trucks due to be replaced soon? Should we expect that in the coming year or two? Or where are we at with the amount of trucks that we have to their usage?
So Alderman, I'll try to take those questions in the same order as you asked them. First off, merging the Public Works facility into a combined location has really increased the efficiency of the department and our ability to work as a whole, share staff, share resources and deploy resources as necessary for inclement weather. As it relates to your question regarding the refuse and the recycling trucks, they are, they are replaced on a capital replacement plan. Most of the recycling trucks are in a 10-year to 12-year cycle. The refuse, we'll call them refuse packers, the larger ones you'll see on the road. Those are upwards of 15 to 18 years. And the mileage on some of those is getting up. I'll ask Pat Mullehill to talk about what the current plans are for replacement. I know there's some that there was just an award made on a bid for the refuse packets. Am I correct, Pat?
Yes.
Pat Mulle was the Deputy Director of Public Works, responsible for the services side.
Yes, I, on the rear loaders, we just had a big comeback. We're in the process of awarding that. We'll be purchasing five new rear loaders. We'll be ordering those. The lead time on them is about, probably going to be 300 days. We're seeing longer lead times on vehicles right now because of COVID. Parts back order, stuff like that. I'm sure you heard about the silver chips for vehicles that are missing. And steel, steel prices have gone up quite a bit, too. On our recycled trucks, we're actually, those, we have a lot of new, those are all 2017s and 2018s when we did that change over to the different style cans a couple of years ago. So we'll be in good, we'll be in good shape next year on rear load recycled trucks. We're going to have, we'll have five new ones at that point.
Perfect, thank you. Now with as far as our our plows and what have you, how about, can you give me a little history on how many plow trucks are active, you know, during an active snowstorm? An average route, so anyone that's watching understands, you know, how many, do you guys count about how many miles a driver does in this particular route? Maybe on what the average is? And you know, is basically how's the condition of our, you know, snow and plow removal trucks?
Again, Alderman, I will take those in order and at the end I'll let Pat speak to the equipment. We have 32, what I'll say, first response city vehicles. That being pickup trucks with plows in Sanders or just plows up to the heavy-duty dump trucks with plows and Sanders. And we can deploy when necessary up to nine refuse packers just for snowplowing. We have two definitive snowplowing plans that start when we send out the city trucks, which will be that 32 number. We have the ability to call in up to an additional 60 pieces of private contracting equipment as needed and that decision is made contingent upon the weather and the future forecast for the next 12 to 14 hours. As far as the condition of the equipment, I would say it's all in very good condition, but I'll let Pat speak a little further to that.
Yeah, our heavy-duty fleet is in very good condition. Light duty, we put in about 18 new pickups this year. They were from multiple fiscal years that we had out to bid and a lot of those went before the winter. We'll be purchasing two 10-wheel dump trucks coming up, one for the Water Department, one for Public Works. Those are, have to be bid. Those didn't go out yet, but they'll be going out soon, though. And also what we bid in our medium-duty trucks, we'll be purchasing about four of those. Also, a couple for the Water Department and Public Works combined.
I'm mute myself, thank you.
Do you mind if I jump off of Alderman Newjame for a second here? Because I have a question about exactly what you're talking about there. You're talking about, this is Alderman Markey, my apologies.
Ahead, Alderman.
My apologies, sir. You're talking about going out and getting the private contractors and bringing them in. And I can tell you that I'm looking at a street across from mine that I've been here for 36 years that has never had a city truck. It's always been a contractor. So is there a cost analysis on whether it's going to, it would cost us more to actually go out and lease a truck with an employee in it than to constantly pay these contractors to do these streets every single year? It's not like a one or two things, because I can see if we're calling them in just as, as needed, but this is the same contractors or they're a contractor, but they have the seasons and they're always doing the same roads.
Well, Alderman, as you speak to that contractor doing the same right route all the time, our plan is developed. We begin in late summer. The plan is finalized in October. So you could have the same contractor, hopefully with the same driver, in the same area. So you could have the same contractor, hopefully with the same driver in the same area. And that's beneficial for a number of reasons. The driver is familiar with the route. He's familiar with the truck that he's assigned to. And the truck that is assigned is appropriate for the area. Not every street needs a heavy duty truck and some of the streets can't be done by a heavy duty truck. So the public works team looks at the equipment available again. Beginning each August and then divides our plan and prepares our plan before the first snowstorm. It is more, I believe it's financially better for the city to use private contractors with their own equipment. They are responsible to the city. We don't provide fuel or meals. We just provide the sand, which is weighed on the scale when they go out. And weighed when it comes back in, the sand is controlled. I think it's just far more beneficial for the number of times that we use the contractors. They are not used in each and every storm and not to the same level. This past winter, I believe it was eight snowstorms, gentlemen, that we used contractors. So this winter, we responded 22 times, eight times we use private contractors to supplement our fleet.
Any further questions for public works?
Yes, please.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, Mr. Simpson. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Um, just a few questions. Some of the raises that are happening, are those all contracted raises?
Yes, ma'am, for the, for the salaries for employees, correct?
Okay. And then I'm looking through here and it looks like we have like 20 positions that are unfulfilled. Do you need, is there anything we can do to help? Get those, because I know you guys are busy and you're hitting a busy season coming up. It would, you know, it's just kind of concerning that some of these are, are empty positions.
At the, I'm sorry, Alderman, excuse me.
No, go ahead. Thank you.
So the 20 positions that you currently saw when the budget was submitted may not all be vacant at this time. It's an ongoing process, working through public works and human resources and going through the testing process. At this time, they are not all vacant. We have a couple of heavy equipment operators, one starting this Wednesday. I'm sorry, this Thursday and three refuse people, starting one this week and two in the next two weeks. So we monitor and we work with human resources to fill those as needed. But at a time of the budget submission with retirement, you are right, the number you saw was 20.
Okay. And the civil engineer position, it looks like we had two spots, we filled one, we're adding a third. Is that, do we have new projects coming up or is that after an analysis of our personnel?
Alderman, I'm glad to invite and introduce you to city engineer Roy Kavanaugh. And Roy will address that question for you.
Hi, Roy.
Alderman, thank you for the question. Yeah, my name is Roy Kavanaugh, I'm a new city engineer. One of the vacancies we have is for the traffic engineers. We interviewed for that position this past Friday and we're hoping to baking off it through HR shortly. We do have a civil engineering two position, which is being, working through the process, being advertised in, excuse me, with the HR department. And in the proposed upcoming budget, we have another engineering position, which we're going to be advertising and hopefully filling off of the same list. So we're moving aggressively to fill the vacancies. We're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you. Nice to meet you. And I just have one more question. I'm not sure if it's a long or short answer. Recycling. I don't know the whole story with recycling. I think we ship our recycling out, like how is the recycling program working for us? Is it working for us? Do we have complications? Is there something we need to do or something we have in the plans to do? I hear like we ship it off to China. I mean, I don't know what the right information is, we're just by asking.
Alderman, I'll give you the best information that I can. When we went into our new enhanced recycling program, our recycling rates were between 4 and 6%. We are now hovering around 18%, so we are definitely going in the right direction. Our recycling coordinator, CJ May, spends every day, whether it be on social media or programming for educational purposes. I think the most critical thing and that we need to do is more education. And hopefully as we come through some of this COVID and relax some of the restrictions. Staff prior to COVID, COVID was in fact out on the neighbor, in the neighborhoods knocking on doors to those people who weren't recycling. And we found that most of it is an education problem, that they did not know what was recyclable and what wasn't.
CJ does an amazing job and that's all my questions. I appreciate you and all of your personnel.
Anybody else, anybody else have questions for public works? Hearing none, then thank you, gentlemen. And we'll go over to education as our last department for this evening.
I'm all set. Can you guys hear me?
Who, who's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Harmon.
Oh, thank you. Yes, yes, we can hear you. And then the rest of the folks from education are just filing into the
Okay.
The room here. So as soon as Sarah gives us, it's all settled, we'll be good to go. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, President Penarowski, we have Dr. Ruffin and Dory Bialo from the Education Department.
All right. Thank you all. Does anyone have questions for the Education Department?
Mr. President?
Alderman Markey?
I guess I will start with the Education Department. There's a couple of questions I have. I was looking over the budget and there is a number of open positions that you have in your budget. That have been going on for a, open positions for many years and it's hard to fill them. And it seems like there's way more than we'd even be contemplating using. I remember it was paraprofessionals. I think there was 78 in there or something like that. It was a huge number. I'm, I'm I don't want to quote the exact number because I don't have it right here in front of me. My apologies on that. Compared to what we actually have filled. Are we actually planning on filling all these positions or are they just going to be open line items to cover any expenses we might have in the school budget? Because the school budget that was requested didn't get up to where they were supposed to, that you guys requested to the mayor's office. I guess I'll start with that one.
The positions that we have, we keep them open because they're vital to to filling them if we find people that meet the criteria to hire them. Many of them are hard to fill positions and because they're hard to fill positions, sometimes they are, you know, extremely competitive across the state. And yes, if we do find them and they do qualify for the job, we do want to keep those positions vacant and we do want to have flexibility of hiring them. As for paraprofessionals, oftentimes paraprofessionals are hired based on the needs of students. And sometimes you have students with special needs that require a paraprofessional for a wider range of responsibilities. Anywhere from transport to, to dressing, to the instructional aids that occur in the classroom. So we have a variety of paraprofessional positions and yes, they are hard to fill for the kind of staffing that we need. But they are important and we want to keep those available for when we find the right staff to hire them.
Dr. Ruffin, I, I understand that I am an educator in the higher education and I've had a child who was in the whatever school systems who had a paraprofessional. So I, I understand on how important they are when, when it's needed. But it just seems like they're just more than we might possibly need to go on the history of what we've actually hired, looking back a little bit. And that's why I question it, because it looks, has that look of, well, if you had 20 and you asked for 30, I can understand it. Ask for 35, but it seems like there's a lot more being asked. That's why I asked the question that has been used in the past. And with that being said, talking about staffing. There was an, it, last year, okay, there's a lot of staffing that might not have been used when we weren't in school, where they cost savings there. Because I have talked to some people who have done some work for the school, who were cut down on hours or didn't have anything to do. And is that what's in your surplus that you're going to pull them forward this year? So is that accounted for in this budget or not?
I'm not sure if I answered the question.
Well, any surplus money that we would have in fiscal year 21 is not offsetting fiscal year 22. We have put funds away into a sinking fund that'll be used towards education, capital projects or infrastructure. That's what we've done with our surplus money. So it isn't offsetting fiscal year 22. We're receiving 158 million, 375. That is our minimum budget requirement that the city has to allow to give to the Education Department. So we're not offsetting anything by the fiscal year 21.
And in your and in your budget, they also ask for office equipment for $160,000. Which happened to be the same thing from last year. So we're replacing office equipment. Is that actually covering it? We're replacing the same stuff? Is that being? I guess with all the extra money coming in to help with stuff, things being changed around. Of course, we don't have the wear and tear on some of the equipment that we normally have on a normal year last year. Because we don't have the number of students there in the buildings. At times, we didn't have any students in the building. So is all this equipment really need to be replaced this year?
So, so a lot of our office equipment was being utilized through a lot of our grant funding that we received. As you know, when the pandemic hit, we had a digital divide. We had to get one-to-one Chromebooks and, and our students to be able to learn remotely. So we were able to use federal funds that were awarded to the state, that the state awarded to the city. And we were able to purchase a lot of equipment there as well. We also went into a new copier contract. It doesn't show in that line item, but we entered into a new copier contract. That'll cut down on some of the office equipment that we should be purchasing. Because we are now using everything at the copier level. So all the printing will be going to the copier level. As opposed to us buying new printers. So there really wasn't a need to really increase that line item. We were using other funding sources.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave time for other people to ask questions.
Does anyone else have questions for the Education Department? No?
Just real quick, Mr. President.
Alderman Nujem?
Dr. Ruffin and your staff, just want to go out and say, you know, obviously with the pandemic and everything that's going on, I think the Department of Education was one of the departments that got heavily impacted due to the, you know, making decisions on our school kids and myself being a father of four and not knowing what's going on with this year and how we're going to finish the school year. I commend you and your staff and all your sound decisions and keeping all the students safe, having protocol. Correct protocol, chain of commands. You guys want to say you guys did a fantastic job with the everything that's happened in the past year and, you know, a lot of us had to get adjusted too. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We can all agree on that.
Is there anything further for the Department of Education? Alderman Cavala, did you have something? Okay, it looked like you were trying to ask a question. Okay. Thank you all for coming in this evening. I appreciate it and we have nothing else for you at this point. So good luck with finishing the, the school year and we'll talk to you again soon, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right. So that's the end of the department heads at this point. There's really nothing else we can do in the special meeting. In the next couple of days, I will be in touch with Sarah Gary. We'll try to work up the final schedule for the last public hearing and then a vote on the, on the budget. We're coming to the end of the month. We need to get that done. So but at this point, there's nothing else to come before this special meeting. We have a regular meeting that's going to start in just about 20 minutes. So Alderman Brunelli, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The ayes have it and we stand adjourned. We'll see you all in 20 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening again, and we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, May 10th, 2021. I want to just start by wishing everyone a belated Happy Mother's Day to who it applies. I hope you all had a wonderful day yesterday and were able to enjoy yourselves. And with that, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderman Cavala.
Present.
Alderman Cato. Alderman Cato. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
You, Mike, you're muted.
Here. Oh. There you go.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here again.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Markey.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez-Martini.
Here.
Alderman Nujem.
Present. Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Weaver. Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Penarowski.
Here.
14 present, one absent. Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the first item of business this evening would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board should have called in. We'll give you a call back now. Please state your name and address for the record. And there's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads up. So we have the first speaker on the line?
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Thomas Pelletier. I live at 112 Cackert Street. I'm calling in support. It shouldn't be a no surprise to the board and all the items on the agenda. I would ask that you pass all of them. And I would also like to thank you guys in the city.
Sorry, I can't make a phone call with your iPad.
Hello?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Tom. Go ahead.
Sorry. No, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, this administration and this city. There's just so many amazing things coming down the pike as we've seen in the paper in the last couple of weeks. And a lot of great things that have already come to fruition. I would also like to thank, last week was Nurse Appreciation Day. Our nurses in the city of Waterbury, along with our hospitals, have done a fantastic and amazing job helping the city vaccinate all of our residents. And today especially, I would like to thank all of our first responders, our police and fire personnel. Today was their memorial. We should never forget those who have died protecting us and those who have died in the last year due to illness or whatever. We've had amazing fire and police departments doing amazing things for our city. We are just very lucky to live in a city where everybody comes, works together, lives and plays together. And, you know, not everybody in this state always has the luxury that we have in working together. And, you know, I think a lot of cities and towns and the state for that matter are watching us and trying to do what we do here in the city of Waterbury. So we are very lucky, you know, and you guys doing an amazing job trying to hold the line on spending and taxes with this administration. And, you know, just our infrastructure has improved so much under this administration and continues to improve. So I just want to thank all of you guys. I hope that you continue to help this administration by passing all the items tonight. And happy boy, Mother's Day to all those mothers that are on this board. You know, being a mother and doing what you do on this board, it's a lot of work and we appreciate everything you do. So have a great night, guys.
Thank you. Do we have any other? One more, okay. Two more? Okay. Do we have the speaker on the line? Is there someone, is there someone on the line from the public?
Someone gave me $18,000 for that.
So who is it, who is it that should be on? Martin? Oh, Martin, are you on? No? Martin, you should be on. Can you hear me? All right. We'll have to go to the next person then. Okay, Speaker, are you there?
I am here.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for the beep, but okay. It's Bonnie Orentis from 246 Westmont Drive. And there's a couple of things our commission would really like to have you hear. So number one, it is, I think it's budget time. I don't know. I hope you're not finished with the budget. But Public Works needs, in our opinion, quite a number more of permanent blight workers. We are very reactive when someone calls in and we do a lot of that ourselves. They're out there and they're great, but they need a lot more so they can be proactive. There are some areas in this city, we all know, they're constantly, constantly blighted and they clean it up and it's done again and done again. So if we had more, you know, we spend money on a lot of things in our city, but, and we try to make it look nice. We have a new park. We have this and that. But everybody we hear from talks about how filthy Waterbury is. So we need a lot more blight workers, permanent ones, to be out there all the time, just like Detroit, which has come a very long way. And of course, they have some wealthy people that are contributing to all of this, which we don't have, but to the, I called the Public Works in Detroit when I came back from seeing not a speck of sand, not a piece of litter in the area we were in, and they said, "We're on it all the time." That's how it stays so clean. But we can't do that because we don't have enough people to be on it all the time. So if you're still budgeting, I hope you can put a budget in for more permanent blight workers to be around this city all the time. And we also think that we need more cameras purchased in those specific areas that are constantly horrible for everybody so that they could pick up who's dumping this stuff. Because we know a lot of times it's people that don't even live in the city that do it. But all we calls we get, the emails we get, what we see on Facebook is how dirty our city is. And that would make a bigger difference than a lot of other things that are being done. If it's a clean city, people tend to behave better. I might get rid of some of the ones that don't. They might leave. And we hope that you'll do, able to be, able to do something about that. And the other thing we were talking about is our Welcome to Waterbury signs. The one I'm personally most familiar with is the one at the bottom of the driveway from the Western Hills Golf Course. It is very dull and old and shabby looking. So if you're saying Welcome to Waterbury and it's shabby already, the impression people get are what they do end up seeing. So we would love to have some, and we know some people that would help to contribute to the cost of some of those signs. They won't be able to pay for all of, you know, a whole sign, but they will help pay for them. So we need things like that to really bring Waterbury to where it should be. We definitely need more workers to be out there all the time, cleaning especially the areas that are constantly, constantly barraged with people that just think Waterbury is their garbage pail. And I hope that you'll give this, all, give this some thought, some very serious thought, and put some money into that. You'll see the big difference it'll make. We just had our cleanup and, you know, the people from refuse were like out there immediately because Dave Simpson sent them all out. And they picked up 41,000 pounds of litter on one Earth Day cleanup. We only have that once a year. So if, if things were being done all through the year, we wouldn't have that kind of extraordinary number.
One minute.
So if anyone heard me, I hope you were listening. I don't know. It's hard to tell when I can't see anybody. So if my time is up, I hope it's well heard. And this is what the litter commissioners are looking to see happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was it for speakers? Just got one more. Okay. Are you on? Okay. Are you there, Speaker? Do we have anybody on as a caller? No? Can you hear me? He's not, okay. All right. Is there anyone else after that or? Are we done? Are we, is that it? We can't get, okay. All right. We had two other people who had called in but who did not pick up when we called back. So with that, we'll close public speaking. And the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, April 19th, 2021. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded to approve the minutes for April 19th. Is there any discussion? Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the minutes as presented and a no vote would be to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved unanimously. The minutes are approved. Before we go into the Committee of the Whole, we have a couple of items to be added to the agenda this evening. To be added is item number 19 is a contract between the State of Connecticut, Department of Public Health and the City of Waterbury. It's with regard to $2.7 million in funding for the COVID-19 Vaccine Equity Partnership Funding Program. And so that contract would be to allow us to access the money. And then there's an item number 20, which is the Form Subscipient Partner Agreement for the COVID-19 Vaccine Equity Partnership Funding Program, which is the form contract that we would use with our subrecipients who will be partnering with us. And the idea is to utilize this money to get out and reach folks who have otherwise been unable to get out and get the vaccine or who might not, we just need to contact them to follow up with them. So I would entertain adding the contract with Public Health as item number 19 and the form agreement as item number 20. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. So those items are then added as items 19 and 20 for new business. Now, we also have, and I think, Mr. Harmon, I think you're on the line, but I have a question. We have 21, 22, and 23, which are requests to add items to our agenda this evening. However, and this also touches on, I would note while I'm doing this, items 13 and 14, which are also from the Education Department. All of these items show as being contingent on a Board of Education approval at their meeting on March 20th. And so we're not going to take them up tonight until the Board of Education has had a chance to act on them on May 20th. Our next meeting after that is May 24th, so we'll take them up at the next meeting. So 13 and 14 will just hold and they'll go on the old business. The, I'm sorry? All right, give me, give me one second. They're going to explain to me what. Okay, all right. No, they're just waiting for me to come back because we're in the middle of adding these things on. Yeah. Yeah, bring them down and we'll do it when we get to those items on the agenda. So, all right, I apologize for that. But I, these items, there is a spend down requirement that they, the money has to be spent from the source it's coming from by August. And so if we don't do them tonight, we're going to lose two weeks for the contractors to be able to get going with them. So at this point, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Alderman Markey, due to the fact that three of these, we received one hour prior to our special meeting and the Aldermen have not had the diligent time to go through and read them and check them out because of the timeframe that they were emailed to us, which would be.
Well, let's, before we get to this, Alderman Markey, let's get to the motions and then we can have a discussion.
I want a motion to table it.
There's nothing to table yet, so we got to add them to the agenda or there'll be a motion to add them to the agenda. At that point, we can have discussion on them. So just give me a moment. So the, I would entertain a motion at this point to add as item number 21, a contract for rooftop HVAC unit replacement between the City of Waterbury and M.J. Fahey &amp; Sons Incorporated. As item number 22, a contract for locker replacement at Driggs Elementary School and Sprague Elementary School between the City of Waterbury and Hertz Furniture System LLC. And as item number 23, a contract for telescopic bleacher replacement at Crosby High School and Kennedy High School between the City of Waterbury and the National Equipment and Facility Solutions Incorporated. At this point, I would entertain, Alderman Brunelli, a motion to add these items to the agenda.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and these three items are then added to the agenda as items 21, 22, and 23. With that, before we take them up, we will then might entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves into a Committee of the Whole. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Okay. All those, motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it and we're now sitting as a Committee of the Whole. So item number one on the agenda this evening is a request for the approval of a newly created job specification for the network engineer in education. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number one.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the newly created job specification for network engineer and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the specification is approved unanimously. Item number two is a receivable place on file of a resolution concerning the proposed construction phase one of the Noggettuck Valley, of the Noggettuck River Greenway commencing at the Waterbury-Noggettuck City Line and traversing 2.2 miles north to Eagle Street, which has been approved by the city plan on August 14th, 2021. Item number three is a receivable place on file regarding the notification of the resolution concerning the proposed capital improvement budget plan for fiscal year 2022. Item number four is receivable place. is receiving place on file. It's a submitting, the submittal of the City of Waterbury's financial status report. It says on the agenda January, but it's March of 2021. Item number five is an agreement between the City of Waterbury and M.E. Simpson Company Incorporated for a water system audit for the City of Waterbury Water System. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number five.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the agreement between the City of Waterbury and M.E. Simpson Company for the water system audit. No vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. The agreement is approved. Item number six are refunds for the following individuals from the Department of Public Works. Richard and Elizabeth Irazari for $2,433.80. Lynn Ioronomo for $1,122.97. Patricia Mercer for $3,632.63. Matthew Paradisi for $102.58. Stolfi Pellegrina for $157.53. And Michael Griffin for $5,136.87, a total of $12,586.38 from the Bureau of Water. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number six.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the refunds, and no vote will be to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the refunds are approved. Item number seven, refunds from the Bureau of Water to Bonnie Golette for the, in the amount of $183.23, and Amy Caligari in the amount of $318.72 for a total refunds of $501.95. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number seven.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the refunds are approved. Item number eight is a professional services agreement for the Notifier Fire Alarm Systems in the amount of $70,855 between the City of Waterbury and Integrated Technical Systems Incorporated. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number eight.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, I would just note that these items, it's, as I noted before, for 13 and 14, also for eight and nine, are being, are subject to the approval at the Board of Education at their next meeting, which is scheduled for May 20th, 2021. There may be a special meeting, but because of the timing that these have to be completely spent down by August, if we wait for our next meeting to take these up, we're going to lose two weeks, and the likelihood is the projects will not get completed. So, with that, I would recommend that we approve these items in the Board of Education, even though we normally don't like to do that. Is there, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Markey?
If we are approving it today, and it's not going to be approved until they approve it on the 20th of May to go forward, where are we losing two weeks? We're losing four days. Unless my math's wrong.
They, they, well, they may be meeting earlier than that as well. Their next scheduled meeting is May 20th, but I understand they may have a special meeting in the interim to take this up.
Okay.
And Alderman, if I may, these four contracts, there was a workshop meeting of the Board of Education last Thursday, and they incorporated these items for a special meeting that were approved again last Thursday evening on these four items.
Okay, that's eight, nine, 13, and 14, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I do not have confirmation if the three others were added, but there's a, a good chance they were on, with everybody under, understanding the time urgency on these associated contracts.
Thank you.
Tracks are being funded by a, a special grant, which, as Alderman Porowski mentioned, there is a spend-down timeline on these projects with the projects needing to be completed by the time we get into the middle part of August.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the professional services agreement for Notifier Alarm Systems in the amount of $70,855 with Integrated Technical Systems Incorporated, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number nine is a construction contract in the amount of $312,466 for F.J. Kingsbury Elementary School and Bucksville School Playground Improvement Playscape Equipment and Installation between the City of Waterbury and Creative Recreation LLC. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number nine.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the construction contract, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 10 is a professional services agreement in the amount of $237,337.65 between the City of Waterbury and DPC Engineering LLC. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 10.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
So, I just want to understand, so this is a contract to basically audit and look at? I just lost my place. To look at the sewer system, right?
Yes, so this is, this project is designed to go in and determine where there may be leaks and where we might need to make repairs, because one of the problems is there's infiltration into the sewer systems of groundwater, and the groundwater is water that doesn't need to be treated, and it just overwhelms the system. So the idea, and DEEP is pushing hard for all of these, these sewage treatment plants throughout the state to go through this process to keep out as much un, non-sewage out of the system as, as possible. So it's necessary to go through and test it to see where the seepage may be coming in, and it'll cut down on the amount of water we have to run through the treatment system.
Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions or discussion? So hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract between the City and DPC Engineering LLC, and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 11 is a memorandum of agreement with the University of Connecticut, NEAG School of Education for a four-year period at $50,000, or $5,000 per year for collaboration and facilitation of the Waterbury Teaching Fellowship. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 11.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve item number 11, and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and the memorandum of agreement is approved. Item number 12 is a Connecticut Office of Early Childhood School Readiness Grant for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Waterbury School Readiness Continuation Funding Grant Application and the Quality Enhancement Grant, which is incorporated into said application, and sub-grantees for the same. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 12.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract, and no vote, or the memorandum of a, of a, yeah, the, the fiscal grant, or no vote would be to disapprove the grant application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the grant is approved. Item number 13 is a contract for the horizontal hung steam coil blower air handler replacement in the amount of $121,000 between the City of Waterbury and F.J. Fahey &amp; Sons Incorporated. Alderman Brunelli, is there a mo, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 13.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, this would be for the air handlers at the Sprague Elementary School on Thomason Avenue. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve this contract, and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number 14 is approval of a contract for the replacement of gymnasium floor systems in the amount of $164,788 between the City of Waterbury and Atlantic Sportwood Floors Incorporated. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect?
Motion to approve, item number 14.
Hold on a second, hold on.
Oh, what's the corrected amount?
Oh, the 100, I'm sorry. It, the corrected amount on that, the, the, the amount on that one is $181,266.80. You all should have gotten the, the corrected contract with the change being just that amount. It's, so instead of 164,788, it's really $181,266.80. Alderman Brunelli, I'm sorry, there's a motion.
Motion to approve the correction.
Yeah, the motion is to approve the, the contract with the correct amount in it. Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract, again, in the amount of $181,266.80. A no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, the contract is approved. Item number 15 is an agreement for the disposal and processing of municipal solid waste response to RFP number 6855 between the City of Waterbury and FNG LLC. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 15.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Um, Mr. President?
Yes. Alderman Brunelli?
Yes, when we spoke earlier at our meetings, not all the Aldermen were there, but this new program is done really well, subtracting the amount of deliveries, and the most important thing, we were told, is no rules were violated by this company in doing this last contract, so it looked pretty good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, none, then a yes vote would be to approve the agreement for the disposal and processing of municipal solid waste between the City of Waterbury and FNG LLC. A no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 16 is Amendment Number 1 to the City of Waterbury Water Pollution Control Department Operations Maintenance and Management Service Agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated, which is a subsidiary of Jacobs. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, item number 16.
Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
The motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve Amendment Number 1 to the contract with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated. A no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item number 17 is a, is requesting we set up a public hearing on proposed water rates for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Mike, before we do this, can we do this? Is, is the timing right to do it at our next regular meeting on May 24th?
Yes.
Okay. So I would suggest that we, we set the public hearing on the proposed water rates for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, for May 24th, 2021, at 6:55 PM. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the public hearing is set. May 24th, 2021, at 6:55 PM. Item number 18 is the City of Waterbury Capital Improvement Plan for the fiscal year 2022 to 2026. At this point, we're just going to hold, uh, we'll, we'll hold this, it'll go on to old business, and let me just explain that this is a revision of the old business item number five, but the only change between this and old business item number five is in the source of funds for the capital project, because we can, the, the American Recovery Act money is eligible to use for these kinds of projects, so we're going to program that money in instead of the source in the old business number five. So what we'll do is we'll, uh, when we get to it, RPF, old business item number five, this will become an old business item, and then we will take this up with the budget when we, when we fi, uh, do the final approval on the budget. So, just so you'll know why that's on here. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Standing committees? Oh, I'm sorry, no, we've got to go through these things now. So we have
19.
Items number 19, item number 20, so just give me one. Okay, so item number 19 is the purchase service contract between the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health and the City of Waterbury to allow us to access the $2,712,628 in the COVID-19 Vaccine Equity Partnership Funding Program with, with the City of Waterbury. So Alderman Lopez, is there a motion with respect to that?
I move.
Oh, Alderman, yes, Alderman Lopez moves approval. Alderman Brunelli, is there a second? I'll mix things up tonight.
Yes.
Okay. Motion having been made and seconded, what I'll, I'm going to do is there, this money that's coming in, as I said, is to do outreach to folks to get them, um, the, the COVID vaccine, to be able to go out for project management, advertising, general supplies for the city, and then money is going to be dispersed in accordance with item number 20, which is a subrecipient partner agreement. And just to give you a, a, a run-through who the subrecipients are here, so you'll understand how the money is going to be is going to be allocated. So $543,239 of this is going to the city for project management, advertising, supplies. The remaining funds of the $2,712,628.67 are going to subrecipients, so $16,176 is going to the YMCA for two health fairs, two pop-up vaccination clinics to help educate and ensure high visibility. $805,054 is going to the Community Health Center to provide mobile vaccination and vaccination sites for residents. $991,560 is going to Grace Baptist Church in partnership with Connecticut Transportation Services to provide transportation services to vaccination clinics and doctors, host pop-up clinics on the church premises and to book vaccination appointments. $27,956 is growing, going to the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership to provide bilingual case managers to assist in obtaining vaccinations, as well as referrals to other needed care. $225,204 is going to the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury. $225,204 is going to the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury to provide vaccination clinics, work with vulnerable population, and transport, to schedule vaccinations and provide case management services. $22,817 is going to Madre Latina to provide literacy information to Latino communities regarding vaccination center and sites. $22,744 is going to New Opportunities to provide a data, to maintain a database, implement phone banking for the COVID-19-related vaccinations in low and vulnerable populations. $57,744 is going to PAL to provide transportation for residents to and from vaccination clinics as well as supply a food truck for vaccinated residents. So that's, that's the, uh, the breakdown of the, of the funds, those will be the, the purpose of, uh, item number 20. So, right now, pending before you is item number 19, which is the contract between the State of Connecticut and the Department of Public Health to allow us to access the $2,712,628.67 under the program. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any other, is there any other discussion?
I do have a question, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Thank you for acknowledging me. So the $2,712,628, that's a, a grant or money that's coming in, but there's a budget share of the 500, I think it was 27,000, right? So are we paying, oh, here's, 543,293. So it says the City of Waterbury will provide programming and services supported by a budget share of 5,000, 500,423. Does that mean we're paying the 543 to get the 2.7?
No, the 543 is money that's coming to the city out of the 2, 2,712,000 for our purposes, and then the rest of the money to get up to the 2.7 million is being distributed in the way that I had indicated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract with the Department of Public Health, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously and the agreement with Department of Public Health is approved. Item number 20 is the format agreement that we would enter into with these various agencies or sub-recipients to expend the money in accordance, um, with what I've just outlined for you, so with that, I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, to approve item number 20.
Uh, Mr. President, is that a conflict for Victor to second this one?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, I move for motion to approve item number 20.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez?
I, sir, I, I understand that is not a conflict, but I would rather recuse myself.
Okay, all right, fair enough, so, um, is there a second on this?
Second.
Alderman Salvio, thank you. The motion having been made and, and seconded, then, as I said, this is the sub-recipient partner agreement for the program so that we can disperse the money to our various partners. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the, uh, contract, uh, the format contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it, and the record will reflect that Alderman Lopez has recused himself. With that, a yes vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion, um, carries unanimously, and the template agreement is approved for use going forward. Item number 21 is the contract for the rooftop HVAC units replacement between the City of Waterbury and M.J. Fahey &amp; Sons for Bucksville Elementary School, Chase Elementary School, Westside Middle School, and the Wilson Elementary School. Is there a, the contract is in the amount of $269,500. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 21.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Alderman Markey?
Um, I understand now that you explained that we have to put this through at a timely manner to get the funding, so it goes through for August. Um, I still would like to be put on the record to state that we should get this more than an hour ahead of time, uh, before our meetings, so there is due diligence on the part of the Alderman to be able to read through these contracts so that we can vote knowing what's exactly in the contracts.
Alderman, I, I couldn't agree with you more, and as you know, we started this evening with my saying that, given the nature of this, I was reluctant to go forward, but we have also always taken the position on this board, um, and it's a vote, so people can, you know, vote the, the way they choose to do this, but it's always seemed to me to make sense, and we have generally, as a board, taken the position that we can, uh, we, we deal with these things, uh, when they come up in this manner because of the timing for them, and very often, for various reasons, these things just don't lend themselves to, um, to, uh, uh, being able to get them to us earlier. We, we, you know, we have over the years instituted a program where both of these contracts come to us a week plus a weekend before the, uh, Board of Alderman meeting. I can tell you, when I first got here, uh, we got them the night of the meeting, and then we moved them to the Friday before, so we've made some great headway in getting them to you in a timely manner, but every so often, we run into these circumstances where if we don't do this in this way, we're gonna, you know, mess up some deadlines, so, and I know it's very difficult, uh, for a lot of you, uh, unless we absolutely have to, to try to come back and meet on a different night, that people, there's a lot going on, there's 15 of us, uh, so I appreciate, um, your concerns, I, I share them, but I think under the circumstances, you know, if, if you have any particular questions, uh, you know, feel free to raise them, these are pretty much the contracts, the form of the contracts that we see regularly, and the process that I think we're all familiar with, so, um, but thank you for that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then, um, the item before us on item number 21 is the contract for rooftop HVAC units with J, M.J. Fahey &amp; Sons in the amount of $269,500. A yes vote would be to approve the contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously and the contract is approved. Item number 22 is a contract for locker replacement at Driggs Elementary School in Pregga, at Sprague Elementary School between the City of Waterbury and Hertz Furniture Systems LLC in the amount of $232,799.71. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 22.
The motion having been made, Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion now having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor, uh, a yes vote would be to approve the contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously and the contract is approved. Item 23 is a contract for telescopic bleacher replacement at Crosby High School and Kennedy High School between the City of Waterbury and the National Equipment and Facility Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $495,000. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 23.
Motion having been made, Alderman Lopez, is there a second?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously, the contract is approved. Respect to standing committees, I would entertain a motion to approve refunds for tax overpayments in the amount of $34,908.46. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the refunds for overpayments, a no vote would be to disapprove the refunds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, uh, the motion carries unanimously and the refunds are approved. With respect to old business item number five, I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file. Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to receive and place on file the old capital improvement plan, uh, a no vote would be not to receive it and place it on file, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Um, and with that, I would entertain a motion that we come out of, uh, committee of the whole and return to the regular order of business, Alderman Brunelli?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're sitting back, or we're back in the regular order of business. And then just to complete the circle, the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve, item number two, item number three, item number four on consent to receive and place on file, item number five is on consent to approve, item six and item seven are on consent to approve, item eight and nine are on consent to approve, item 10 is on consent to approve, items 11 and 12 are on consent to approve, item 13 and 14 are on consent to approve, item 15 is on consent to approve, item 16 is on consent to approve, item 17 is on consent to set a public hearing with respect to proposed water rates for the next fiscal year on May 24th, 2021, at 6:55 PM. Item number 18 is, we're just gonna hold it, it'll go on to the old business calendar. I, uh, standing committees, I, is on consent to approve tax overpayments in the amount of $39,908.46. Item number 19 is on consent to approve the contract with the Department of Public Health. Item number 20 is on consent to approve the sub-recipient partner agreements. Item 21 is on consent to approve the rooftop HVAC units replacement contract with M.J. Fahey &amp; Sons. Item 22 is on consent to approve the contract for locker replacement with Hertz Furniture Systems LLC, and item 23 is on consent to approve the contract for telescopic bleacher replacement with the National Equipment and Facility Solutions Incorporated, and old business item number five is on consent to receive and place on file. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar as read, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar?
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman Markey?
That was number 14 with the amend, amended amount, correct?
Correct, item number 14 is the contract in the amount of $181,266.80.
Just wanted to make sure it was the right one on the, on the calendar when we were voting.
Yep, that's it, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Any other, uh, questions or additions, deletions, discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as presented, a no vote to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the consent calendar is approved. With that, is there anything for the good of the order?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, June 21st is Make Music Day, super excited, I know there's a big initiative downtown, um, to support this event, I'm also bringing it, uh, with other residents up here at Schofield Park in Bunker Hill, so if you go to makemusicday.org, your residents or any musicians outside the city can sign up, so spread the word, we'd love to have them, I just opened up Schofield Park, so we're looking for some performers and some support, thank you.
Thank you, anything further? All right, hearing none, then, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion, or there is no discussion for that, or yes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, we're adjourned, we'll see you all on the 24th, have a nice two weeks, stay well.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You too.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
(Music) Narcan esume de camen to talizado para prevenir los efectos de una sobredosis. Ayuda con el entrenamiento y la distribución de Narcan. Inora es una aplicación gratuita del Departamento de Salud de Connecticut. Use Nora para prevenir, tratar y informar sobre dosis de opioides. También puede ayudar con las referencias para pruebas rápidas de VIH, hepatitis C y referidos para el tratamiento de abuso de sustancias. Si usted o alguien que ama está luchando con problemas de abuso de sustancias, por favor, ven a vernos. Mi nombre es Edwin León, soy un trabajador de alcance para el Departamento de Salud Pública en Waterbury.